On board members present, so meetings called to order and then Ms. Hill will do our pledge in a moment of silence.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a little ahead of myself there. We just have a couple of announcements tonight. Board members, you will find at your seat, I believe everyone has three different books for your reading, and those were provided by Missy Massey, so those are for each of the board members. We are thrilled to get this upcoming school year off to a wonderful start, and on behalf of the entire board, I just wanted to say welcome back to our teachers who officially returned today. So as you may note, we are in a new location beginning tonight for our work session meetings. I see no elected officials here at this time, so we'll move into changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as is?
No.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next will be our superintendent's report with Superintendent Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board have some brief updates and a couple announcements for you this evening. Made one principal appointment since our last meeting. Alicia Hinton was now principal of Sequoia Elementary School. We're glad to have Alicia back with Knox County Schools. Ms. Andrea Guy has been selected as Tennessee History Teacher of the Year. Want to congratulate Ms. Guy, and we will be recognizing her on Wednesday evening. We hosted back-to-school safety press conference at South Door Middle School on July 27. Just wanted to thank Chief Roush with the Knoxville Police Department, and also Chief Deputy Trammell with the Knox County Sheriff's Department, and also Coach Gus Paducus for attendance and participation at our safety press conference, where we reminded parents and community it's back-to-school and to exercise safety around school zones and with our school buses and so forth. Last Thursday evening, we celebrated the graduation of another cohort of school security officers at South Door Middle School. Renee McDermott, the new special agent in charge of the FBI Knoxville Field Office, was our keynote speaker. We also celebrated four promotions, and Chief Paducus gave out eight leadership awards. And in both of these events illustrate the amazing partnership we have with local law enforcement, and also pleased to say Vice Chair Lady Amber Roundtree was at the meeting and also participated in the ceremony, and we're also pleased that Ms. Jennifer Owen was at our ceremony too. So thank you to both board members for participating and being at the graduation last Thursday. Of course, teachers came back to school today. Students come back Monday, August 7 for half a day. Our employee giving campaign kicks off tomorrow, and we're excited about a new online format for our employees, and certainly want to encourage our employees to give back to the community. The Teacher's Supply Depot located inside the former Cedar Bluff Intermediate Building will host its first opening on Saturday, August 5 from 8:00 a.m. to noon. The Beck Cultural Center will host its third annual 8th of August Jubilee with its red carpet documentary and dialogue on Tuesday, August 8 at the historic Tennessee Theater. The 8th of August is a day celebrating emancipation in Tennessee. In recognition of this significant date in history, Beck will have a dialogue and present a special documentary, "The Uncomfortable Truth." Knox County Schools embraces the opportunity to participate and support Beck's effort to be an inclusive society that embraces all people and all cultures. As a part of our commitment to the Disparities in Education Outcome Task Force Recommendation and District Priorities Impacting Cultural Competency and Eliminating Disparities, Knox County Schools will provide each school with two complimentary general admission tickets for educators to attend the documentary and dialogue at the Tennessee Theater on August 8. Certainly principals and teachers and school staff are encouraged to attend, and tickets may be purchased for $10 for folks that want to attend, and also KCS educators who attend this event can receive unscheduled in-service credit hours. The Annual Partners in Education Kickoff Breakfast will be held on Thursday, August 17 at 7:30 a.m., and I believe that's at the UT Medical Center Cafeteria. As a reminder, schools will be closed on August 21, and each after-care school provider will be communicating with their families regarding whether or not they will be open on that day. And Madam Chair and members of the board, this concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board for Superintendent Thomas? Seeing none, we'll go to item number six on your agenda for tonight, which is a discussion on the Board of Education 2017-2018 Annual Calendar. As you know, we worked through with PBA and several entities to secure this building for both of our meetings, and moved our meetings off of the first of the month to the second of the month for more consistency. Ms. Hill has asked that this be placed on the agenda, so I'll turn to Ms. Hill.
Thank you. Am I on? I am on. I want to start out by saying how much I appreciate the work involved in making this transition. I know that scheduling was an absolute nightmare, and I know Ms. Bounds and Ms. Cotteney that you all worked, and probably you too, Dr. Thomas, worked diligently to get us moved over here, and I do appreciate that fact, plus the fact that it's just a little more comfortable over here anyway, too. My oversight was when I looked at the calendar that I did not catch at the time, and again, strictly my oversight, that our October meetings are actually scheduled over the fall break, school's fall break. I did mention this with Ms. Cotteney, and I believe that she talked to some other members on the board about this. I understand we couldn't move it back. I had some concerns about perhaps trying to move it forward. I think that it's real important as we move forward, and it's perhaps too late to do anything about this one in October, but I think just as we are very cognizant of our own schedules, that we need to be very cognizant of our teachers' schedules too, and the fact that when traditionally, when we have had spring break or we have had Christmas break, we have not scheduled meetings on those times, and I would appreciate us doing the same thing for fall break. I just think that it's, could be a real inconvenience to some of our teachers and staff and faculty that have boxed that week out to be able to do things with their families, and then might perhaps be prevented from that because we have meetings. I know that central offices works, I think, two or three days in that week, but still traditionally, that happens at spring break too, and we typically don't schedule meetings. So I'm asking if there's any possibility that it can be changed for October. Again, I wasn't in on the scheduling, so I appreciate that might not be possible, but I do request that in the future that we be very cognizant of our teachers' spring and fall breaks, and not schedule our meetings when they're out.
Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I think this is a one-time occurrence because we moved it. We've never really scheduled for spring break or fall break, so I think, I agree with you, Ms. Hill, and I think we do try to take that into account. Are you asking if we can move it forward? If we go back to the first week, I have a commitment and won't be in town for my job. So I could, you know, I understand exactly what you're talking about, but yes, my calendar looks a mess. I have first week, second week, all on there, trying to figure out when we're meeting.
Okay. Ms. Hill, did you want to comment?
And I appreciate that, Ms. Fugit, and it just so happened, looking at the calendar, I planned a vacation with my kids and grandkids on fall break because we weren't supposed to be here. So I get that whatever we plan just doesn't always work for everyone. I don't know if pushing it forward is even an option, Ms. Bounds. You were the one that was front and center for scheduling. I don't...
Yes. I think once that came to our attention, and I appreciate you bringing it back before the board for discussion, and I think it was just an oversight on my part too. Those of us that worked on it were working with PBA and the Metropolitan Planning Commission and all the other groups that use this facility and trying to get it off of that first week. So it was an oversight, and I would hope that going forward, like you said, and we need to make sure that next year it does not fall on fall break. I think when Ms. Cotteney, it came to my attention, Ms. Cotteney kind of checked about moving it back, and it was going to be a problem for this facility, and just to try to keep with consistency, that was an issue. And then in checking with individual board members, there were two, I think Ms. Fugit and Ms. Dethridge, right, that were going to be out of town that first week. So I don't know unless somebody else has a suggestion what we can do for this year, but I certainly think that we need to make sure that doesn't happen. I did ask central office personnel as well, and some of them have trips planned, but that happens from time to time, so there are a few that will not be at that meeting that month, but maybe others can cover for them, because they also take that time to be with their families. So Ms. Dethridge, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Does fall break fall the same week every year? Every year? It doesn't? So this is maybe a one-time, I mean, for this year, but it may not be a problem for next year? So I would just say, I agree that, you know, you try, but under the circumstance, there's just so many different pieces to the puzzle that we did the best you could with the circumstances. And so I don't, and this is something that we're going to continue to do throughout the year, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
The same second, okay. So I just think that it's just something that happened, and we can't always make it convenient for everyone, but it really needs to be convenient for the board, because it is the board meeting, and I don't want us to step on others that may want to be here. But this is a one-time thing, and I think that hopefully it won't happen, and if fall break doesn't fall on the same week every year, then we shouldn't have this problem, hopefully.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Can we just cancel?
Ms. Hill.
Ms. Bounds, did you all look at the week following, the third week, the 16th through the 20th? I noticed that we do not have another board meeting again until October 30, so we actually are, we won't be backing the, you know, having meetings close together like we might on other occasions.
Yeah. We possibly could. Part of the problem is, evidently, we're a low man on the totem pole for use of this building, so we've had to really negotiate, and want to thank the mayor in helping with that negotiations to get to use this facility for security. We could move it forward, but we would have to move it back to the Andrew Johnson Building, and I just don't like that that sends a bad message when we've really worked hard to move it to here, but that's just my thoughts on that.
Fair enough.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, we'll move into the regular agenda items for Wednesday night, and the first thing is items and contracts, and there are 15 of those, so let's take the first five, and if there's any discussion or question on the first five under items and contracts. Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question for somebody about this ACT prep. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm thinking about the Gibbs one. I'm not. This is Aspire. My bad. That's not what I meant.
Okay. You don't want any information on that?
No, I'm looking to the Gibbs prep. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discuss, Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually, thanks for bringing that up, Toni. I had just some questions about the ACT Aspire, and I know Ms. Massey's out there. Maybe she can...
I think Ms. Jackson's coming.
Oh, Ms. Jackson, okay. You got out of it, Missy. Just, so this is for all kids in grade 6 through 8, and can you just speak to it since it's a new, looks like a new agreement?
So originally, ACT did not require a contract, and then they came back and said that they would require a contract, which is protecting them against us reselling their items to other districts. So this is a pilot for our schools. We offered it to our middle schools, and this is their attempt to practice with the ACT Aspire for benchmark assessments and 10 classroom assessments for core instruction.
So is it going to, it's not going to replace the other benchmarks, is it?
No, and they're very short quizzes. Right. It's an addition for them to track against ACT.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion on any of those items, 1 through 5? Okay, moving on, 6 through 10. Is that the one, Mr. Norman, you wanted to speak to?
Right.
Number 6.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. This may be for you too, Shannon. So my question, I guess, is, I know ACT gives a pre-ACT with quite a list of services that accompany that pre-ACT, so I'm just wondering why this is a competitor to ACT, so why are we going with a competitor? That's my question.
Mr. R, Dr. Ryswick, did you want to address that?
Thank you, ma, there we go. It works. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is actually, good question, Mr. Norman. This is actually the curriculum for an ACT prep class that the A, make sure I get it right, the A-list, right? And this is what they used last year as well. So for the course, this is not the assessment. This is actually the curriculum they use for the course that they teach for, and they used it last year. This is their second year then that Gibbs would be offering this. So it's 110 books that they would be using for that.
Okay, so the class is taught for a semester, or what is it, a semester?
Typically, it's a semester course.
Okay. And so in choosing to do this, how did we come to the decision that this would be better than a pre-ACT in terms of prep?
So my understanding is, was that this is Williamson County that has been successful in their ACT, that this was the curriculum that they used, and there was a site visit to see what they used, and Gibbs chose to use that at that point. So the Aspire is more of an assessment that tells where students are, and then, you know, you could, I guess, use these in tandem if you wanted to for a curriculum that might help support that. But this is more just kind of the generic curriculum for ACT prep for students who might take that course as opposed to an assessment like the pre-ACT that you're speaking of.
Okay. So who would finally make that decision to go with this as opposed to the pre-ACT?
This would be a principal decision for what they use for that curriculum.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to mention that it is in competition and that we ought to consult at least with the ACT people about it beforehand. I don't know that that wasn't done. Maybe it was. Just for your information. Thanks.
I would say too, we, you know, we have, we're seeing a lot of kind of products that we're piloting and looking at to see what aligns best. ACT changed some of their testing. They had the Explore test at one point, and now the Aspire series is kind of a newer assessment for them. So we have met with the vendor from ACT, and that's what I think kind of inspired us to do the Aspire portion. So there may be some other products that are still out there as we kind of determine which one gives us the best results.
Okay. Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. Dr. Ryswick, is this basically the equivalent of a kind of course that some parents may send their children to, to prep them for how to actually take the ACT tests, some testing strategies in addition to a review of curriculum-type questions that might be on there? I'm just trying to get a feel for if that's what this course is.
It is. We offer that ACT prep, you know, as an elective course for different schools. And so, yeah, it's much like that. You know, there probably is some form of evaluating where a student is and then exposing them to this curriculum, probably test-taking strategies and then content areas where they're deficient as well.
Ms. Horne.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Ryswick, have you, you said that they did use it last year. Did you see a difference from the ACT scores at Gibbs?
It's a good question. Our team, our REA team, is still looking at some of that data analysis. What's kind of tricky about the ACT is really, it's kind of, you know, it's a test to see where students are performing. So typically, if they've done well on their state test, they're going to do well on that. If they have a higher GPA, they're going to, I mean, there's a lot of different data points that correlate to that. So I think sometimes we want to look for something that's a little more of a silver bullet, that this thing all of a sudden bumped scores up, and really exposure to more core content taught well and unpacking the standards do that best. And so I think there is some merit in learning some of the, how the test is designed and how to figure that out, but we typically don't see big spikes in scores because of that. So I think where we see a lot of schools using this are going to be, I'm taking my English course, but I'm also getting it reinforced, or maybe I'm stretching in a course like this to be exposed to even more things that maybe I haven't been as exposed to as much. So to answer your question, we don't have the results yet for sure on how well this one did versus others, but our team is looking at that, and they also have a plan for the Aspire to look and see what his results are as well this year.
Okay. And another question on the Aspire for the middle schools. Are those just small assessments here and there? That's not like another big assessment. Is that correct?
Ms. Jackson.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. The Aspire is for benchmark assessments. They're not as long as a full ACT. The students will get immediate results from that, and then there are 10 classroom quizzes. They're just short, they're meant to be short classroom quizzes that you would do like the first 10 minutes of a class to be able to benchmark within individual classes.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we'll take items 11 through 15. Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on item 11, I wanted to invite everybody, once the school year gets going, to come out and check out the amazing new library at South Door High School. And that's what, that's what this item number 11 is in regard to. In the library renovation, they are going to have sort of Starbucks-like school store that the kids are going to help run, and it's just been an amazing makeover at that library. And of course, I'm biased as a librarian by trade, but I think it's going to be a wonderful space, that we're actually going to see other districts coming to Knox County to take a look at how South Door is using this library in this space and integrating all the pieces of the library throughout the curriculum, and then giving our kids real hands-on experience. So I'm very excited about it.
Thank you. Ms. Owen.
Also on number 11, will they be open to students or coffee sales for faculty only? How will that, how's that plan to work?
Who could answer that question? I don't, Dr. Ryswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's actually part of the marketing curriculum. They have a marketing class there, so it'll be sold out of the store there for the school, so students will have access to that.
Have we looked at nutrition guidelines to see how that fits in?
Yes, that's, my understanding is that that is part of it. It's part of the CT program, and that is something that they've looked at.
Any other questions on items 11 through 15? If not, we'll move into board policies. A lot of these first ones are second readings, so let's take them in groups of five, and have been vetted kind of in the board policy review meeting. So let's look at A through E. Questions or discussion? Mr. Norman?
This may be a little off-base too, but on the personnel files policy, I just, Ms. Owens, be at the last, the last public forum brought up a condition about media access to personnel information. So I guess what my question is, Kelly, is, does, if we were to have a policy that was protective of employees' information, say there's, say there, there's some kind of investigation or whatever, we don't want their name to be blasted out. Do we have a policy, and if we do, does it affect this particular G-180?
Dr. Drebin.
I'm reaching. Madam Chair, to let you know, Mr. Norman, the policy talks about what is in the actual records, but open records requests, according to TCA, requires that certain items are redacted and information cannot be provided. And so one of the things that we are working through with the help of public relations will be to put an attachment to any open records requests that will state that information, what information will be redacted, just so that the public will know that that specific information is redacted according to state law.
Okay. But in the real world, if you're getting requests, I don't know, from a reporter or somebody's being, oh, I guess we're talking about leaks here. Wow, just struck me. Anyway, could the information, information, personal information about somebody, say, perchance was under investigation, do we have good protections in place to their identity? That's my question.
The answer, yes, ma'am. The answer is yes, sir, we do. It will go through a process. Right now, there is a procedure that is in place. When the, when a public member, anyone asks for records, it is requested through the open records department. It is then brought to us in HR. The record is pulled, information is looked at. There is a process to go back through, and the public relations looks at it again. It comes back again. So there's three checks before that information is brought out, and that's the final check. Did I get that right? Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Owen.
Also looking at personnel files, there, since our evaluation system has gone to being digital now, and those files are not really in the physical hard copy file, I'd like to suggest that Wednesday we take a look at maybe tabling this until we can better define what a file is, because if I'm expecting to see that file and I go to look at it, everything's not really there. So even though it looks like, here's your file, it's not really the whole file. And so we'll look at defining that a little better so that we can clarify what is part of that file and where it is, so that when someone does look at the file, there's something to tell them, there's more of this file somewhere else.
Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. I hadn't thought of this till you said that, but the question becomes, to your point, what is the personnel file? Because I also know that there are files kept on employees at school, at the schools where they serve. When does that become part of the permanent personnel file? And the fact that I believe under state law, we, you know, teacher evaluation scores are not in there, so people go in on a fishing expedition for that. That's not there. So I appreciate your point about what's redacted, but some of the explanation would be just what legally we cannot give you. Redacted almost sounds like we're hiding something as opposed to the law prevents us from sharing test scores and that. That's just semantics, but sometimes semantics mean a lot in how it's perceived. But I just bring that up.
Did you want to respond, Dr. Drebin?
Yes, ma'am. Gary Doppler and I spoke on last week to discuss that about what's actually in a personnel file, because the records for evaluations have become electronically available. They are not placed actually in the file. However, what we have spoke about in the Law Department is we should create a opportunity for employees, employees, active employees, who ask to review their file, to make it available either electronically when the file is requested, or to print a hard copy to have both of those things available for that, to ensure that the actual evaluation. When the public requests a copy of an employee's file, the evaluation will not be included, and that is based on Tennessee code that requires us not to allow that information in there. And that's what I was saying. I think we need... And that's what I was saying. I think we need to be able, you're right, ma'am, and I apologize. Ms. Fugit, we, the, we term it redacted, but we're going to have to put it in better terms for the public. These are the things that are in the file. These are the things that cannot be provided in the file. When we talk about redacting, it takes out social security numbers, birth dates, personal addresses, and those types of things that will be taken away so people will not be able to have access to people's social security numbers and those types of things.
And that's a good thing.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Drummond. Any other questions on that? Okay. Any other questions on B, C, D, or E, or discussion? Ms. Owen.
On Wednesday, I'd like to also consider taking B through M and approving those all at once. Those are all second reading.
Okay. Other discussion about that. Ms. Owen would like to consolidate items B through M for approval. If there's no objection, and you will make that motion on Wednesday. Okay. So going on, items F through J. Any discussion about those tonight? All second readings. K through M. Item number N is a first reading, Knox County Board of Education Policy, I-212, reconsideration of instructional materials in textbooks as amended. Any discussion on it being a first reading? Okay. Then I, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fugit.
Just for, for general public, I mean, I think sometimes on these first readings, it's nice to hear why the revisions are being proposed, why we're, what our thinking is. So, you know, sometimes it's, law has changed, whatever, and I just can't, does anybody want to share with this? Did this come from a recommendation from staff? Has this law changed? Or did a board member bring this as a possible change?
Dr. Davis, do you, or Mr. Dupler, Ms. Jackson, who would like to speak to that? Dr. Reisler?
So it came from staff?
Came from staff.
Okay. I mean, I just, yeah. I think it's good to have it, for people watching on TV who may want to know what's going on, the why behind some of this is important.
Sure. Okay. So this policy is about the reconsideration of instructional materials in textbooks?
Right.
And it's combined, it's really just referencing two other policies that also have that same, require the same type of consideration. So just making sure that when looking at this particular policy, we know to go to the other two as well. Does that?
Did you have a follow-up question, Ms. Fugit?
Yeah, but in general, the purpose of this is to make sure that if a student does not want to participate with the book that is being offered, they have the ability to select something else, and they will not be penalized. That's kind of what I'm getting at, is.
I apologize.
No, no, I didn't make myself clear at all. But that might be why it's good to talk about this.
That's true. Yes, yes, that is the case.
So it's reiterating that through several different policies to be consistent that if a parent doesn't want their child to read what the teacher has assigned, they can ask for an alternative, and there will be no penalty.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And it will be commensurate with the original.
Thank you.
Lauren.
I just wanted to point out, it says on the top of this that it's second reading. I don't think we've considered this before, but there is a little bit of a difference between the agenda and what's at the top of the policy online.
The online says it's the second reading.
It says second reading, but I believe it is first.
Okay.
We just need to check that, double-check.
Terry said it was tougher. I don't know. Okay. Duly noted. Thank you. Ms. Fugit, did you have a follow-up? Okay, your light was on. I was just checking before we moved on.
Push the button, instead of the red button, sorry.
That's okay. Okay. Items O through S. Policies. Okay. Then T through X. These are all second readings. Ms. Hill.
Ms. Massey, I believe this would be for you. Remind me again on, I'm looking at V, the testing accommodations, one that we are rescinding. Tell me again why that's being taken out. Is it somewhere else now?
Ms. Massey.
Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Hill. Yes, the, in consultation with the Law Department, we have special education policy that broadly says that we cover all of the areas of IDEA and state and federal laws, and this was just one of those one-off policies that we felt like needed to be just consolidated in the understanding that we are in compliance. Otherwise, we would need to do policies on all of those different items, and that would be pretty extensive. And Gary Dupler may have something to add to that.
Mr. Dupler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only addition would be that simpler is better, and that's what we were going for here, just complying with the, with the IDEA and the IEPs. And, and as Ms. Massey indicated, those are very extensive and very specific, and it would be, this one just, just kind of fell out of place, really, with, with what we were looking at.
Okay. So just to be clear, I, because I did have a question from a special ed parent about this. Every accommodation that is allowed per IEP is already stated in another policy somewhere? Or the fact that that, that an accommodation has to be made is already in all of our other policies that relate to special ed services?
The special education, there's a policy, and I can't recall the number at this moment, but there's a special education policy that indicates that we comply with the IDEA and state and the state laws. And the state, would we get the information from the tester? Each year, we know that if there's any change in accommodations, we get that information from the state, and that's posted on our website. But yes, any kind of accommodation, the IEP team, all of the allowable accommodations, the IEP team reviews annually. And then if there's a change in what the state allows from like where we tested last year and where we'll test this year, then we'll notify parents of that through a letter and give them an opportunity to have an IEP team meeting.
And believe me, Ms. Massey, I know that you do all that, and I know that Knox County Schools goes out of their way with accommodation. Could, could you, or someone find, find for me? You said this is in special ed policy. What, what that policy is, which number that policy is? I'd just like to review it.
Mr. Dupler has it, I think, Ms. Hill.
Oh, good.
Thank you. And Ms. Hill, I believe I've located that as I-160, entitled appropriately, special education.
Entitled?
Special education.
Oh, under special ed.
I-160.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Massey. Okay, finishing up our single-digit alphabet, Y through Z. Does anybody have any, oh, Ms. Owen, is Y through Z, or are you back up on?
I am back up, but it's fast. I'd like to suggest combining O through U on Wednesday.
Okay. Totally noted. O through U, board. She's made a suggestion to combine those. Okay? Thank you. Okay, looking on Y through Z, any discussion? If not, we'll go to the double digits, and these are, if it's with the boards, okay, we're going to do these individually, since they are some of our more difficult policies we're looking at. So AA is approved second reading, Knox County Board of Education Policy. J-193, student suspension as amended. Any further discussion on that tonight? Okay. Item BB, approved second reading, Knox County Board of Education Policy. J-194, zero tolerance as amended. This is the second reading. Any discussion on that? Item CC, approved second reading, Knox County Board of Education Policy. J-211, harassment, intimidation, and bullying or cyberbullying as amended. Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question on page two, line 37. This says the intervention, let me find the spot. Page two, line 27. It says, "An appropriate intervention must be initiated within 20 calendar days from the receipt of the report unless the need for more time is, is appropriately documented." Can someone speak to the fact, thank you, Ms. Massey, of why is it 20 days? Kind of, I've had a question of, that's a long time, you know, can you just talk about the timeframe?
So we've taken, sorry.
Go ahead, Ms., yes, of course, Ms. Massey.
So we've taken the language directly from the law that was passed. It's up to 20 days in our training with principals. Sometimes there are pretty extenuating circumstances, so the time that it would take to get an investigation completed could be lengthy. But principals know that when we have an allegation, we put some safety measures in place immediately. But to have that finalized plan and everything in place, they have up to that 20-day period.
Okay.
Does that answer your question? But in training, we have emphasized, if we have a report, that we need to make sure that we put some safety measures in place to make sure that the student is feeling safe in their school environment.
Thank you. I think it, I think if you just read this to someone who reads it without that explanation, that that's, that that could be a concern.
Right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Massey. Ms. Owen.
Could we put a reference to the law in there somewhere with the 20 days? That might be helpful.
Okay. Mr. Dupler.
Yes, yes, not a problem. I believe that's 49-6-4503, but I'll, but I'll double-check that.
Thank you for that suggestion, Ms. Owen. Okay, seeing no other lights, we'll move to DD. Approved first reading, Knox County Board of Education Policy. J-190, code of behavior and discipline as amended. And I'll turn to Mr. McMillan, who recommended this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned last month, that I would, I was working with the law director on something I would be bringing forth, and obviously, this is it. We tried to make it as simple but inclusive as possible to cover as, as many areas of discrimination as we, as we possibly could. Now, I will point out that nothing occurs until after charges have been brought or accusations have been made, and there is a thorough investigation, and the person is, is found guilty then and only then. In reality, I assume that, I can't imagine that, that if that played out, that the teacher would not be terminated. This also incorporates some other people, administrators and others up the chain of command or puts them on notice, up to and including the superintendent. But again, I point out that it's only after it's been investigated and the individual has been found guilty. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dupler, did you have anything you wish to add? If not, it's fine. I just was going to ask you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All I would ask is that, is that I prepared this at, at Mr. McMillan's request, and it's, and it's, it's his thoughts, it's his ideas, and I'm just, I'm just a facilitator to try and put it into words, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Horn, and then Ms. Roundtree.
I think, I think the second part is a little bit confusing, where it says, "A finding against an employee of knowing failure to report." That sentence is a little confusing. My, and then my second thought is, I, we had an email from someone earlier with a question about this being included in a policy about students when we're talking about the behavior of school administrators or employees. So, you know, is it the right place for this type of policy? And then just the second, second sentence, I thought, was a little bit confusing.
Okay, thank you.
Did you speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Horn. I can speak to your second point, which, which Mr. McMillan and I discussed, which was, you know, this could be seen as more of an employment phrase appropriate in the, in the HR section. But since this was dealing with specifically students and, you know, the actions of employees with students, that's why it was placed in this section. But, but I would also recommend to the board that if, that if you do want to pass this, that we, that we cross-reference it in the, in the human resources section. So, so I can't speak to that.
Fugit.
Thank you. I was just, did you have a follow-up? I was just going to say, I, I agree with Mr. McMillan's point of putting this in here was sort of my thought about employee dress and the student dress code, because when people go to look for student stuff, they often look at how the adults in the school interact with the students. So I support that. They don't have access to our HR policies. You know, a parent doesn't have access to, per se, what we deal with our employees. So I think it's good to be in here, and it sends a pretty strong, clear message to parents that this board is not going to tolerate people being bullied, discriminated against. And if any adult in the building knows about it, and they don't do anything about it, we're not going to tolerate that either. And I, I think that's a very good, strong message to send our community.
Mr. McMillan, follow-up?
Just, just a quick follow-up to exactly what Ms. Fugit just said. I mentioned this at the policy meeting, but I did not mention it today. That was, the intent was for this board to go on record and send a message to all concerned, so to speak, employees, students, general public, that we're not going to tolerate discrimination in any shape, form, or fashion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no, oh.
Just one thing, thanks, thanks, Madam Chair. I too agree, and I think it's really, it, it's never redundant for us to express how, how important it is for us to treat kids equally. And this is a very well-said evidence of that. And also, so many times in my experience, teachers are, are the ones that seem to be on the hook, so to speak. And so I really like how this, the responsibility ascends to higher levels. And I think that's very helpful and supportive of the classroom and the classroom teacher, so I appreciate that.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. McMillan, for bringing this forward. And we will move on to EE, approved first reading, Knox County Board of Education Policy. J-191, misbehaviors and disciplinary options as amended, first reading. Ms. Roundtree, and then I'll go to you, Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question. The language is in this policy, but I think maybe Ms. Massey would be the one to answer this. In the, because I have heard from some teachers and parents, just the concern about the shift from dissolving ISS and turning it into a RLC, a restorative learning classroom. So I just wanted to sort of check in with you and find out what, you know, how frequently data is going to be collected on this RLC so we can, as a board, then reflect on, is this practice, you know, working? I just, I feel like there's some concern that ISS is leaving and maybe, you know, shifting to this RLC classroom. So if you don't mind us speak to that, Massey, I'd appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Massey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Ms. Roundtree, we will be, there will be a place at every school, middle and high school, that was, if a student needs a place to be for an entire day or a series of days to be working on their behavior, thinking about their behavior, that will still exist in the restorative learning center. So we are, we have hired those folks. They are going to be in two days of pretty those folks. They are going to be, in two days, a pretty intensive training, to talk about how do we, you know, focus on reentry, how do we focus on repairing relationships, et cetera, with students. But, but there will be students who may come to restorative classroom, just as there is now in ISS. A student may come for a class period, a principal may send them for the remainder of the day. But we'll collect data, and we'll be looking at how often our students, what the return rate is compared to how frequently students kept returning to ISS in the past. So, we plan to do a pretty comprehensive data study.
Okay, great. That was what I was interested in, was the return rate, Ms. Massey. So, I appreciate that. And then, can you just briefly share with the board sort of the background of the folks that have been hired to teach in the RLC, if you're able to speak to that? I'm sure it's a pretty wide swath.
We do have a pretty wide swath. We have some people that have school-based training and have been part of our schools, and maybe as an instructional assistant, some of them. A few of our PBIS, which is our district-wide TAs, who've been working on, at different schools, kind of troubleshooting and supporting different behaviors. Some of those people were hired. We have some people with mental health backgrounds that have worked, worked at some local mental health agencies. But we have a pretty diverse group of candidates. But we feel really good about them. There was a pretty intensive screening process. They met with somebody from my team that was a school psychologist, and some other folks, that we did an initial interview. And then, all of that information was shared with principals, and they, the final interview selection process happened at the school level.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Before I get to my, my main question, and while Ms. Massey is still up, can you tell us the difference in Restorative Learning Classroom and PAC?
So, Restorative Learning Classroom is our secondary initiative that we're doing with the restorative practices in middle and high school. The Personal Accountability Classroom is still the paraprofessional who is working with the students who come to them. It's kind of the elementary version of ISS. But honestly, in implementation, if you were to look at the model, the PAC is probably much, much more like what Restorative Learning Center will be than it is ISS. But we've just done that Phase One of Restorative Learning Center staff at the secondary level, and then we'll review that, and then talk about what happens with the PAC, the Personal Accountability Class. But we will also be doing a lot of training to, as we continue to work with those teaching assistants.
Okay, to piggyback off of that, Mr. Doppler, if PAC is already in policy, and the secondary version is, I mean, it's really the same thing, do we need to change policy if it said in-school suspension or PAC? Those were options. So, is it necessary to change it to say RLC? Or could it stay as is, since PAC is very similar?
Go ahead, Mr. Doppler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Owen. I guess my question would be, I'm kinda gonna, I wanna go back to Ms. Massey, if I may. Is, is PAC available at the high school level, or, or at the secondary school level? Because, because if the policy says PAC or ISS, then I think you would have to choose between one of those two.
So, we have not called our secondary program PAC, Personal Accountability Class. We have traditionally referred to it as an in-school suspension. Our, our teaching assistants that work with students at the elementary level do sometimes have students that work with them, but they work more intensively with behavior plans. They do some interventions in the classroom, et cetera. They are not being trained this year in the entire realm of the restorative practices and how to do that restoration with relationships. We're focusing on our secondary classrooms.
Is, is Restorative Learning Classroom, is that a form of in-school suspension?
So, the kids that, the students who traditionally may have been sent to in-school suspension would go there to be supervised, to complete their schoolwork, and then also some other restorative practice interventions.
I think, I think legally, you know, if, if Restorative Learning Classroom is a form of in-school suspension or a form of PAC, you could, you could use it. It's just my understanding, the intent upon using Restorative Learning Classroom was to put more focus on...
On the, on the restorative nature of the classroom versus the, not again, not that it's not a consequence, 'cause students could be there doing their work and not be able to go to their regular classes, or be out in the hallways between classes, depending on whatever the, you know, the administration had assigned them to, just as they have in the past. But there will be a much more focused effort in reflecting about, how did I get here? What are the specific things that I need to do? And then, as we look at students who might be coming on more than one occasion, contracting, following up with that, with the regular ed. teachers, just putting in those additional supports.
What I could say and, and recommend to the board is that, you know, although it would not put the focus on, on the restorative learning, the current language with the in-school suspension would not prohibit using the restorative learning.
Thank you, Ms. Roundtree.
Oh, thank you.
You might just whine there, Ms. Massey.
I think, but I had another question for Ms. Massey. I'll just make it quick. Do you think it would be possible, Ms. Massey, for, you know, we'll have the data from the first semester? I think we have, do we have an end-of, end-of-month work session in January? Does anybody remember off the top of their head? Do you remember? That we would be able to, I would just like to see that as one of our items at our end-of-month in January, to take a look at that data and see how things are going, if it pleases the board and the superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do.
That's what I thought.
Okay. Ms. Owen, can I come back to you and get Ms. Coontz first, or do you wanna go first? I don't know.
Those questions kind of had to do with what I was gonna say.
Okay, well, go ahead.
All right.
And then we'll come to you.
Based on those answers, and that, that the current language in policy doesn't keep us from using restorative practices, and that we are looking at two different policies, and some guidelines, and some definitions that we have been looking at for a while, I would like to suggest that since this has been such a, such a process, and that it is now, it's now in its third administration, I would like to suggest that we table all of this, and ask Superintendent Thomas to send it back to his team, and make a timeline that is reasonable, so that we can have a completed format in time to put it in place, so the principals can have it in their handbooks, so that it can be ready to go next year. Instead of having a version that continually changes, I'd like to see the staff come up with, here is what we are presenting to the board, so that we don't have all these different versions coming to us, and it's, you know, a continual change, so that everyone is confused. I'd like to table what we have here, all these versions, send them back to the team, and let them start where they are, not, not throw it all, everything, and start all over again, but start where they are, and then bring it forward with a timeline for completion, so that we can actually have something that everyone can look at all at once, that has had input from whatever committees they feel are necessary, input from the community, so that we have a finished product when it comes to us, that we can actually move forward with.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Coontz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a clarification question on what the curriculum is for ISS and PAC, if there is any, and where that is accessible. Just as a student, I would like to know if that's an actual class that has a curriculum or not, and how that will be altered, why it needs to be altered, kind of the, along the lines of what everyone's concerned about now on the board. But just wondering if they have curriculums for those classes.
Ms. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Curriculum, per se, the students in that classroom work on their school-assigned work. We do have a social skills curriculum that we work with students who are in there during the time that they are there. So, part of their day is a social skills curriculum. That, but that piece of it will be, will continue, but it will be much more extensive with restorative practices, and looking at really specifically each student's offense, what their pattern of behaviors is. I mean, it will be looked very different for them. You've done one thing, and you're assigned to the restorative classroom for a class period or a day, versus, I've been, you know, four times now for the same sort of offense. What are we doing to proactively make sure we have a good plan in place, to make sure that that student either has the motivation to not do that behavior again, or quite frankly, sometimes it's because students don't have the skillset to respond in any different way. So, we'll be doing some teaching in that classroom as well. So, it's a lot of behavior analysis, functional, functional behavior analysis, and then thinking about how do we support students to be successful in their regular ed. classrooms.
So, just clarifying, it's more personalized now with the restorative learning.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Ms. Dethrich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And going back to what Jennifer was talking about, if, if we table it, I guess, we, okay, we had a committee that worked on it from October through May. So, are we talking about the staff working on it, or taking it back to the committee that did all the work and presented it, along with Ms. Massey, to the board? When you talk about going, I'm just asking. When you're talking about tabling it, Ms. Owen, you wanna answer? Who, who are we gonna have working on this?
I think that would be up to Superintendent Thomas, to take it back to his team and, and determine what needs to be done, and have them determine that timeline.
Okay, because I know the committee's gonna say, okay, then you're gonna take the work that we did and just say, okay. I know, they had a lot of hard work and a lot of input on this. And we know it's too late to start this year with it, because school starts, and we still don't have a policy that's, that they presented. So, I guess I was just trying to figure out who exactly would be a part of this, and how it's gonna actually work in order to get it ready for next year, because this year, we know it's not gonna happen. So, that was my question, 'cause you're gonna be in the middle of trying to make this happen, I'm sure, so.
Okay. Ms. Massey, do you wanna try to...
And one more question. Does that mean that those schools that have had restorative practice and are ready to go, can they go? Can they use it?
Ms. Massey, you wanna address?
So, I would, that, our, the group that has been giving some advice about the discipline policies anticipate that we're going to be getting back together, because there were other discipline policies that we had not had an opportunity to discuss in our committee meetings. So, I would think that we would definitely involve that same group. Most of them have already, several of them have already reached out to say what's gonna be our schedule. So, I think definitely the suggestion about making sure that we have that feedback. And then, we have some very specific opportunities that we're going to have for teachers, based on Mr. Norman's request, that we really do a good job of making sure teachers really have an opportunity to give us some feedback. So, we have some sessions that we're going to be setting up, to give teachers an opportunity to have their voice heard, with a little bit of training, but also with that feedback. So, I just, to let you know kind of who we think those people would be.
Okay. And for those schools that are ready to go, will they have the autonomy to do so?
Superintendent Thomas has been very clear with the, I mean, he made that announcement at a principal's meeting, that yes, move forward, continue, because we've had schools that have had excellent outcomes, and to continue that work.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Fugit?
Thank you. I was just gonna say, to Ms. Owen's point, I would like the board, if we're going to send it back to somebody to set a date certain, and that it be by January one, all these policies come to us with the timeline for implementation, or we will find ourselves here again with last minute. So, I say that we need to say, all this needs to come back to us by January first, because then, as we dig in and have questions, it gives us appropriate time for the community to be involved, while school is still in session. Teachers are around, principals are around, parents are around. I, I'm agreeing with you. I think this is a little bit chaotic, but I think that we need to set a date certain for the deliverable that we expect. I just threw out January first. I'm amenable to something else, but that seems to give people this first semester of school to work on that.
It's Roundtree.
I was just gonna concur with Ms. Fugit's statement. I do think, 'cause we've, we're on what month of this policy now? I don't, you know, we've been going around and around with it, and I do see your point, Ms. Owen, to passing it with just the guidelines and the definitions in draft form, but I don't wanna keep putting it off. So, I love the idea, Ms. Fugit, of saying January, for our January meeting, having it come back, because that gives all of this first semester. I know scheduling things is a complex activity, and so it sounds like folks have already reached out to Ms. Massey. So, I concur with the idea to have it brought back to us, ready, ready to go, to vote on at our January meeting, then. And that way, that's plenty of time for us to give input, I think.
Do you want to conclude with?
I was just gonna say that earlier today, we had also just pulled out kind of informally March. So, maybe Ms. Massey would like to think about what, what would be reasonable, and maybe...
Ms. Massey, do you have thoughts on that tonight, or would you like to think on it and get back with the board members?
I'm gonna take the opportunity to think on that, and then be back on Wednesday. I do want to say that for the report out, the January timeline, we have been doing the, you know, the, to do a January mid-month with the discipline data from the first semester. We have the data, and we have the report ready for you when you're ready for the second semester of last year.
Okay, so, we will leave you to get with Superintendent Thomas, and you all work out what's best as far as your staffs, if that's okay. And thank the board for all the discussion on this. So, before we move into grants, I want to recognize Commissioner Evelyn Gill came in, slipped in back there. We appreciate you being at our meetings. So, moving on into contract, oh, sorry. Oh, yes. Our discussion up here earlier had been about N, and we could just go ahead and talk about that. That actually was on second reading, and as you said, Ms. Horn, so without any objections from the board, we will just change the agenda to read as such, second reading, rather than first reading on item N. Are there any objections? Okay. If not, then we will move on into grants, and there are five of those, I believe. Are there any questions or discussions about any of these grants that you have before you? Ms. Owen?
On A, the MOU was not attached to the agenda. It looks like the, well, at least when I'm clicking it, I get the financial portion each time.
The fiscal's on there twice.
Yeah, it says memorandum, but it's just the fiscal note. Okay, what, what is... Oh, okay. Okay, they're saying that the fiscal notes on the proceeds, the MOU.
It's on there twice. No, it's on there twice. The MOU is not attached.
Okay, okay.
It says it's attached, but what's really attached is the fiscal note.
Okay. So, Dr. Roswick, can you, do you wanna address that?
I think, when you click on the MOU and scroll down, the MOU's not connected. I think it is. I think it's just below the fiscal note, when I just tried.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on any of these grants that you had before?
How to use a computer.
Oh.
I'm glad it wasn't just me.
Okay, then we do have one contract.
Oh, I've got one, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
On item C, and Harry Brooks' donation there of his unused campaign funds, do we have any precedent for gifts like this being used in the high school, and how to use them? Is it just the choice of the principal, or it just seems like sometimes maybe there might be a little more democratic way of using money than just allowing the principal to make a decision for the gift?
I think from the press conference I attended, and I'll let Superintendent Thomas address it, that Mr. Brooks was very specific that the, it was the principal's discretion as to how they wanted to use the funds. There was no strings attached. Superintendent Thomas, do you wanna add anything to that?
Madam Chair, thank you. No, I don't think I've got anything to add, other than Mr. Brooks was pretty, pretty clear at the press conference that we had, that would be up to the principal to, to determine how the, to best utilize those funds.
Okay, okay. If that's what he said, that's what he said.
And to my knowledge, I don't know that it's been done before, but I would like to challenge all those other elected officials, when they, in their career, that they be willing to put their funds in Knox County schools as well.
I'd be glad to give you my, my $250 when I'm finished.
Mine's less than that. But anyway, okay, so, without any, oh, Ms. Fugit, did you want to address that?
I was gonna say, the unrestricted funds, I think that has happened before. That's somewhat what pilot did, when they gave each school $100,000 in addition to... somewhat what Pilate did, when they gave each school $100,000 in addition to the turf. Most principals, if they have an advisory committee, sometimes consult with them about how to use it, but we have gotten unrestricted gifts that go directly to the principal. That's the only, those are the only huge ones I know of, are his and then the Pilate $100,000 per school.
Well, I think that's a good idea. I mean, I think the more you include your staff in decisions like that, the better it is for the staff morale, the whole thing, so, I mean, it goes both ways. The principal should have that discretion, but I think good discretion will also include the staff in a lot of ways in making these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, and just to note, we are trying to schedule with Representative Brooks to be here to officially recognize him, but he couldn't at our August meeting, so number nine contracts, there's only one, A, any discussion or questions about it? Okay, moving into the number 10, regular agenda items, to approve the official names of the new middle schools, Gibbs Middle School and Harden Valley Middle School, to be submitted to the State of Tennessee Department of Ed. Discussion on that? Okay, well, then we are ready for public forum, I believe. Ms. Roundtree?
Um, let's see, we have one person signed up for public forum, and remember to state your name and your county, Ron Webster.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Ron Webster, Watuga Drive, Fountain City, 37918. I'm speaking today as a board member of Justice Knox. Given, given the tabling of the disciplinary policy changes, we have no comment tonight. We will communicate our position and views to the district staff, and also to you in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public forum.
Okay, we'll start over here with Mr. Mc, board forum is next, Mr. McMillan, do you have anything? Ms. Hill?
I was in three of my schools today, welcoming teachers back, listening to the principals speak, it was very upbeat and positive, and I just do want to welcome teachers back. Also, I owe a special thanks, probably, I don't want to leave anyone out, but I think it started with you, Mr. Oaks, and Dr. Davis, and also certainly Superintendent Thomas, for coming through on the culinary project at Karnes High School, and, and literally pulling a miracle out of the hat and getting this completed, which we're about a week away, ready for classes to go at Karnes High School, that was much appreciated, and our students will enjoy it greatly, so thank you, thank you.
Ms. Horn? Ms. Fugit?
Just a follow-up question to the culinary, so do we now have three high schools with culinary programs, Karnes, AE, and South Doyle? I'm just curious. Is that a yes? I mean, I'm just curious.
Is that fair? I just don't know.
Yes, Dr. Roswick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Cheryl Hickman just nodded yes, so yes, we have...
So, we just have, we have three?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I was just going to say that it's interesting being on this side of the room for a workshop. I've been on that side forever, for seven years.
Change happens. Okay, Ms., Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to echo the welcome, welcome back to teachers, and I've just loved having the opportunity, thank you to Superintendent Thomas, to try and meet with some of the new administrators in my district, I think that's really beneficial moving forward, and I just love how the, I don't want to say old administrator, you know, the administrators that are in South Knox really being welcoming to the new folks, I just, I love that about South Knoxville, and I think we have a great, great vertical planning going on there, and so I'm excited about this school year.
Mr. Norman?
God bless all those teachers, janitors, and food service workers from this day forward. Thank you.
Ms. Owen?
I, I meant to recognize this person last month, but I want to let everybody know that KCEA has changed leadership, and Tonya Coats is with us tonight, and she is our new KCEA president.
Welcome back, Tonya. I don't think you ever left us, but it's good to have you in leadership again, in that position. Okay, Ms. Dethridge? Ms. Coates? Okay, and the only thing I would add is to thank Ms. Massey for our three new books of study on restorative practices, and just encourage you, board members, to begin reading those prior to our all-day workshop retreat, whatever you want to call it, there is a, what?
Is our board retreat all day? It's typically been the afternoon into evening, is it going to be all day? I was just hoping the afternoon, so I need to know, I haven't heard officially when we plan to start.
Okay, yes, it is all day, can you check your schedule on that? Because we did away with Saturday and talked about...
Last year, I just need to move some things, I had not, it's next Friday, I didn't know.
Okay, I'm sorry, we had been planning it, I thought, I apologize for not getting that out to the board, but it will start.
All right, thank you. So, what time will we start?
If it gets finalized, 9:00 a.m.
What time are we thinking about?
9:00 a.m., and then with breakfast, and then lunch, and then we will give you all the option of individually going to dinner, but there will not be a dinner provided.
Conclude around 5:00, 5:30ish? Okay, thank you.
Conclusion around 5:00, and I'll see if Ms...
That's fine.
Courtney can get that out to all the board members, and, but there will be a section in there about PBIS and restorative practices, so I know I started reading the fir, finished the first book, and I'm halfway through Circles, so it has answered a lot of questions for me, so it might help to, if you have the time and opportunity to prepare before the quote...
It's going to be an essay test.
Okay, anything else? I have a motion to...
Move adjourned.
Move to adjourn, Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any objections? If not, we're adjourned.